Go ahead and call the meeting to order. I would like to welcome Reverend Forbes' sermon from St. James Episcopal Church to do the opening prayer. Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. To bow your heads for the invocation. Almighty God, Heavenly Father, in this season of Thanksgiving, we give you thanks for the abundance of gifts that you have given to the people of this community, for the bounty of this city, and the beautiful land in which it resides. We pray today for your wisdom and courage upon our mayor and our city council to make fair, meaningful, and timely decisions for our city, that they might govern justly among the many interests and issues of our community. Give them compassion to understand the needs of all the people they serve. Give them a sense of peace and trust as they work together for the common good. Lift up and give you thanks for this Girl Scout troop who is with us tonight, for their dedication to public service, and for the building up of well-rounded young women. The cookies aren't bad either.
Yes, Lord.
Bless the Lord. Pray for our first responders and all those who put their lives in danger so that we might live in safety and peace. And today, we especially lift up our veterans in our community, for all those who have honorably served and are serving in the armed forces, who are grateful for their willingness to sacrifice for others, and who have devoted their lives to our safety and freedom. Gracious God, comfort all those who suffer and grieve from any sickness or adversity. May your grace and the blessings rest upon us all, so that we may continue to become the people you call us to be. All this we ask through your Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, council. First item on the agenda tonight is the election of a new council president and council president pro tem. And I will entertain any nominations or motions at this time.
Mr. Council President, I would like to nominate Councilman Martin as council president and Councilman Burrell as president pro tem.
All right, I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion on these nominations? All right, I think it's a little presumptuous to assume that we were going to appoint a new council president, but I guess so be it. But no, I'm looking forward to Cory and Jack taking over. I know that Cory do a great job. So I do have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. I'll pass the gavel.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
And I'm gonna switch to your seat, too. Yeah.
Or to Jimmy's.
Appreciate you. Oh, yeah, we'll do all that commotion. Yeah, no doubt. I'm following you. Yeah, thanks, brother. That's not mine. Thank you, sir. All right. Well, first of all, I want to thank Councilman Robinson for the excellent job that he has done while in this seat. I know people think that this is a thinkless opportunity, but it really isn't. There's a lot of sacrifice as far as the service that he provided, especially in this particular position. Once you get behind the veil, you understand that everything runs through the council president, so I want to personally thank him for the job and ask everybody to give him a hand, if you don't mind. All right. All right, so agenda item number two, we're going to approve the minutes. I would like a motion to approve the minutes of October 23, 2023, regular city council meeting.
Make a motion when you approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
No, but Lisa, I will abstain. I was not here for that meeting.
I will also. I wasn't here.
Y'all don't need to abstain.
Yeah.
You just have to... Can't confirm them.
So we have enough to vote on it, correct?
We do, but she's right. They don't have to abstain. You can amend the minutes anytime, so.
Yeah. So any further discussion? Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right, agenda item number three, we have a report of the mayor.
I have a whole bunch of stuff to carry with me to the podium tonight. Good evening, council. I have two items under the report of the mayor. First is I would like to recognize Lori Line. She is the general counsel from the Alabama League of Municipalities. Lori, would you come up? I also have Mayor Richard Till here from Loxley, who's gonna help me with this presentation. So I know we all know Lori, and we know what she does. I know Marcus and Chris know her and Mayor Till, but I just want to tell everybody a little bit about Lori. Lori joined the Alabama League of Municipalities Legal Department in 2001. She brought with her a career and a background for local government. She had been practicing law in Montgomery where her primary clients were county officials. In addition, she worked with the Alabama Legislature, but she has been serving as the league's general counsel again since 2001. And that, what she does is she advises municipal officials and employees from over 400 member cities. Lori's worked closely with the league's state and federal legislative agenda and is also a frequent speaker on issues relating to municipal law in Alabama. I know she speaks with the Clerks Association quite often, and Lisa gets to talk to her probably more than anybody here. So, but Lori just does a great job. Always look forward to seeing her and also just really lean on her a lot for legal counsel and for just her general knowledge of local government. So me, as a newly elected official, obviously, I've reached out to Lori numerous times to ask questions and get to see her in Montgomery when we're at league meetings and everything. So I have two items for her tonight. First, because I'm trying to juggle so much up here, I have a certificate of appreciation from the City of Fairhope. And this just says, "To Lori Line, in recognition of her many years of service to the Alabama League of Municipalities and her service to municipalities throughout the state of Alabama, the knowledge, expertise, and guidance provided to the City of Fairhope through the years and all of the municipalities, as well as your service as the league's general counsel and responsibilities in advising municipal officials and employees, your commitment to serving as a member, and also your commitment to serving as a member of the Alabama Association of Municipal Attorneys. The City of Fairhope recognizes your dedication and endless efforts to assist our city over the years, and for this year to be honored and commended." Don't go away. I have one more thing. So Mayor Till is here with me, but also Mayor Craft sent a statement. He wanted to say, "Lori, on behalf of the City of Gulf Shores, I want to extend our heartfelt gratitude for your dedicated service as the general counsel for the Alabama League of Municipalities. Your support and guidance over the last 22 years have been invaluable. As you embark on this new chapter in your life, we want to wish you all the best and your well-deserved retirement. Thank you again for your outstanding service and best wishes in the future." I'll give you a copy of this as well. And on behalf of the Ballin County Mayor's Association, we also have this gift for you.
Thanks. Appreciate you, brother.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anybody else want to say anything?
Yeah, I'd like to say, Lori, it's been a pleasure working with you the past 11 years, and you've been invaluable to not just Fairhope, but to the entire state. And you've educated so many elected officials in the proper way to conduct business, and so for that, we thank you. I know there was a time at which you probably wished the City of Fairhope would quit calling you, but those days are past.
Don't lie. It's okay.
Loxley was the best work.
Loxley has the best food. I would say, whenever we went there.
But thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Lori, I think you know how much I appreciate you for all the hard work that you have done for the municipalities of Ballin County and the state of Alabama, and we wish you a happy retirement. And next time you need a little tip in playing top golf, I'm willing to... Thank you again.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Lori.
Thank you. So, and then... Thank you, Richard. Appreciate it. So the next thing on my agenda is I'm going to want to recognize our veteran of the year. This past weekend, most of you know that are actually a week ago, we celebrated Veterans' Day, and then we had our sunset prayer ceremony on this Saturday to kind of close out the Veterans' Day activities. So every year, we have a great parade, but we have so many wonderful veterans in our area. But at this time, I'd like to call up, calling Juju, but Edwin Lassard, Juju, to receive his plaque as veteran of the year. Come on, come on this way. So, for those of you who don't know who Juju is, like most of us, I just want to tell you a little bit about him, because if you go pretty much to any veterans event or any funeral where the Patriot Riders are gonna be, you're gonna see him there. He is truly somebody who dedicates his, he has dedicated his life to the service of not only his community, but fellow veterans. So he lives to service fellow veterans every day, rain or shine. He organizes and leads events to find and care for veterans of our region. Whether he is assisting young veterans that need a place or a group to connect, helping sick and elderly veterans late in their life, or honoring veterans whose lives have ended, Juju does it all. While working a full-time job, he fills his free time with very proactively finding Fairhope's regional and at-risk forgotten and needful veterans and making sure they get the help that they need. He is a member of the American Legion Eastern Shore Post 99, and has served multiple times as an elected officer for that post, in positions as sergeant-at-arms and executive committee member. He is also a member of the Patriot Riders and Patriot Riders from 2012 until present, the Patriot Guard Riders escort the remains of deceased veterans to their funerals or their burial. So he's currently a Patriot Ride captain, correct? Good. Okay, he is organized and participating in the adoption of approximately 50 forgotten veterans in Fairhope and area nursing homes, and this involves routinely visiting the veterans, organizing special events for them. He is also a volunteer veteran with Covenant Care Hospice, where we do our We Honor Veterans program, which is visits of veterans in hospice care at the end of their life. Honors each veteran with a pending ceremony certificate and Patriot-themed blanket made by volunteers. In 2019, he was honored by the William F. Green Veterans Home for his dedication to serving their veterans. Support member of the, and he's also a support member of the Compact Veteran Motorcycle Association from 2018 to present. So gives me great pleasure to present our veteran of the year for this year, Edwin Lassard, or Juju, as we like to call him, and his plaque says, "2023 Veteran of the Year for his dedicated and selfless service to our country, our community, and local veterans organizations." Congratulations. The other thing I'd like to mention, we have two former veterans of the year here with us, seated here in the front row. And I think the thing that makes this award so special is that it is voted on by the peers, their peers, people who've received that award in the past, so it just makes it a little bit more special. So congratulations again.
Thank you.
All right. You can let me know later, Juju, how you got that name, man. We'll talk off record.
Yeah, yeah, we'll do it down here at the tiki.
That's right.
So after the mayor reading all that, I'm tired. I'm wore out just her reading this stuff. So we've had a very busy week this week with Veterans' Day programs. We've done high schools, city events. I'm very humbled, let me say that first, I'm very humbled. I'm out there, like the mayor said, I'm out there every day, and I'm doing it. But I tell you, until you, until somebody recognizes what you do, you don't really realize. I don't realize, I guess, because it's really, I'm retired now, so it's my full-time job. That's what I'm out there doing. But you know, it's never one person. I'm out there with Patriot Guard Riders, I'm out there with the American Legion Riders, I'm out there with my fellow veterans. So I surround myself with dedicated, honorable, respectful veterans, and they're out there hitting the pavement every day. So I'm just honored to be around all these veterans every day that I'm out there doing these things. So I appreciate it very much. Thank you, council, committee, whoever voted. Heartfelt thank you.
Thank you, Jay. Thank you so much.
Also, just two more things that I'm gonna scoot off to the lobby and take a picture. We have one of our junior city council members here, Jackson Adams. Jackson's right over here. He's here tonight. We've asked our junior city council to attend some of the meetings, so you'll see them routinely in some of the city council meetings. Jackson, thank you so much for being here. And then also, this week, we have our tree lighting event. So I'm really excited to kick off the holidays on Thursday in Gaston Plaza. I hope everybody will enjoy seeing that almost complete, but the tree is up and the lights are on the tree, so really excited for, to kick off the holiday season, and so thankful for the employees that make these events possible for our community. So I'm just looking forward to it and getting ready for the holiday season. Thank you.
All right, very good. Very good. Okay, so while we got this break, guys, my family walked in, so I'm gonna recognize my family so I can go home tonight. My wife is in there, and my three kids are here. Thank y'all for coming. You don't have to stay through the whole thing. So, but thank y'all for coming.
It's a long one.
It's a long one.
He's right.
Yeah, yeah, anyway. All right, so we have public participation now. We'll have agenda items five through, is it 32? Five through 32, I believe. Yes, five through 31. Five through 31. Anybody speak on agenda items five through 31? Please come up to the podium, say your name, your address, and you have three minutes. All right, seeing none, we'll move on. All right, agenda item number six, final adoption.
Councilman, I'm sorry, Council President Martin, can I interrupt you for a moment?
Yes, sir.
Can I make a motion to move item 27?
Yes.
To, to the next item on the agenda?
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna make a motion to amend the agenda to move item 27, which is the request from the Girl Scout troop, 8017, to the next item on the agenda, so they don't have to sit through 30 something items tonight.
I have a motion.
I will make a second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right, girls, here we go. Let's go. That's 27, guys?
Yes.
All right, so our agenda item number 27, requests, Allison Marlowe, Girl Scout troop 8017, requests permission to sell cookies downtown across from the Fairhope Public Library beginning January 10, 2024, March 2024.
It's gonna be bad.
Let's go!
Y'all know how...
Hey, where's Lori? Is this legal?
And you brought the best guy, too.
Thank you, babies.
For sure.
Y'all learning, man, I tell you. Anyway, okay, so we have, I read the agenda.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve.
I have a...
Second?
I have a motion and a second.
Which I would have done before you gave me the cookies.
That's exactly right. You didn't have to give us the cookies, Miss Allison.
Kev is not even...
Okay, yeah, trust me, all right. So I would get the vote either way. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Okay, girls, let me hear your speech. What do you have? Help her, somebody help the baby.
We are the, we are 1817, 8017 of Fairhope.
All right.
We have served Fairhope for eight years. We have 22 girls in our troop, from ages second grade to 10th grade. We've been to, we've been to Space Camp, New Orleans, and Savannah, Georgia. We all are or working on bronze, silver, and gold awards.
All right.
We do community services around Ballin County.
And we are planning to go to Ecuador and Switzerland, which means we need to sell a lot of cookies.
Justice slightly. Good evening.
Evening.
My name is Elaine Walker, and I'm the oldest Girl Scout of Troop 8017. I'm currently an international baccalaureate sophomore at Fairhope High School, and I've been doing Girl Scouts since I was in the fourth grade. I'm working towards earning my gold award, which is the highest honor a Girl Scout can achieve. Being a member of the Girl Scouts of Southern Alabama has allowed me to further understand myself as I grow and has taught me crucial life skills. It's helped me to explore and more deeply understand the world around me, and has provided me with incredible opportunities that have inspired a love of learning and serving the community. Selling our Girl Scout cookies is ultimately our only fundraiser for the year, and we use our profit thoughtfully to serve our community and broaden our understanding of the world and various cultures through travel and firsthand experience. We love to sell our cookies downtown because it provides us with the ability to further engage with our community. We appreciate your support and time as our troop strives to make the world a better place for us all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. Thank you so much. Very good. Nothing like the children. They are our future. All right, so we're back in order now, right, guys?
Yes, sir.
All right, y'all help me now.
Number five.
Row number five, council comments. Let's go, we'll start with Councilman Burrell.
So Jay, thank you for your year of service as council president. You're an eloquent speaker. You provide great leadership and just a great job. And Cory, I'm looking forward to you, year on year, as council, or more, as council president, and just really looking forward to your leadership, and congratulations to both of you. Appreciate it.
Really, just wanted to say the same thing. Thank you, Jay. You did a tremendous job for the last 12 months serving, and congratulations, Council President Martin, looking forward to the next 12 months.
Thank you, sir.
No, I'm...
Have a boy.
Yeah, thank you, guys, I appreciate it. And Cory, I'm looking forward to the next year or more under your leadership, and I'm excited for things to come, for sure.
Councilman Boone?
Well, I was gonna try one of these cookies to see if we can promote them. I think I will, anyway, while I'm talking. I would highly recommend to everybody to buy some of these, because they're excellent. And congratulations to Cory, and we appreciate all your dedicated service.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Did we all get the same ones? You got some different...
Yes.
Tag along, okay.
It's the best one. Chocolate, chocolate, and peanut butter.
Doesn't matter what you buy from, they're all good.
Okay.
Best ones.
Get yourself some.
All right, very good. And I think the guys have said it all. I'll do my best at this position, guys, so, and trust me, my guys will keep me in order. But appreciate all the thanks and the congrats. Appreciate that. All right, moving on. Agenda item number six, final adoption ordinance. We don't have to introduce this one. We introduced it the last meeting. So amend zoning ordinance number 1253 and ordinance number 1736 Hilltop PUD, request of Jade Consulting LLC acting on behalf of the owner, Two Hands Design and Development LLC, and amend Lot 29 front setback from 100 to 30 feet. The property is approximately 1.14 acres and is located on the west side of Section Street and south of Petiold Drive. We've already introduced this. Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion for final adoption.
Second. Any further discussion? We talked about this extensively.
Only if you guys have questions. It's a hard act to follow, so go right ahead. I understand, I didn't bring cookies, I get it.
Yeah, I was gonna move, I was gonna move the agenda and let you talk, but go ahead. We'll let you do a discussion, then we'll vote.
Basically said everything with the description there. It's moving the setback. Well, we have the slides, the Hilltop Lot 29, going from a construction, highway construction setback designated by the county, once it got annexed into the city as a PUD, we're now moving that front setback line to be there, 30 feet from the property line, adjusted it a little bit, gets it in line with the streetscape that is existing there. On screen, you can see where it's located at, it's that triangular piece there. If there are any questions that I can answer, if you have any other questions, be happy to. Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval to the city council. Staff agrees.
Any other questions, guys?
Questions, Shereen?
All right, thank you. Mike, I appreciate you.
Yes, sir.
All right, so I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Yeah.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
I need to call the...
Oh, you're called it. Thank you, sorry.
Place one.
Aye.
Council President?
Aye.
Place three?
Aye.
Place four?
Aye.
Place five?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. All right, final adoption. Agenda item number seven, final adoption ordinance, an ordinance amended, ordinance number 1253, request of Ryan Baker Walcott Adams Vernoli Architecture acting on behalf of the owner Philip Godwin to rezone property from B4 Business and Professional District B3A to his resort lodging district. The property is an approximately 0.15 acres and is located at 49493 Pine Avenue.
So Hunter explained this one at the last meeting as well when it was introduced. This is at Pine Avenue. On the screen is the area highlighted on your right side in the blue, looking for a rezoning to the B3A. Currently, this is a bust, a central business district, but not within side. They also own 493 Pine Street as a residence. It was a condominium, it's a duplex currently. The short-term rentals are allowed, are not allowed in B4. This would allow for short-term rentals to be there. If there are any, any questions that I can help explain, I think Hunter did a great job last time, kind of going into the details. If there's anything I can answer, let me know. We also have the applicant that's here that can answer questions.
I'll make a motion for final adoption.
Second.
Lisa, you have to call. Place one.
Aye.
Council President?
Aye.
Place three?
Aye.
Place four?
Aye.
Place five?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Agenda item number eight, resolution. The city council approves the procurement of the NeoGov Human Resource Management Suite for a cost of $13,668.50, and requests to transfer budget from 0010-50300 to 001170503300 to fund most of this procurement.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I mean, is there a, it seems like, you know, every couple of years, we embark upon a new software that helps us recruit our employees. I mean, is this, are we deleting any software or any type of tool that we have? Are we saving money on the backend?
We really don't have another tool. This is the tool that's used mostly by human resource departments to do that. Typically, what we're using to recruit employees, I mean, we're going, using Indeed, we're, you know, putting on the city website, we're going to recruiting job fairs, those kind of things, but this will be the first time we've really utilized a recruiting tool, software tool that I'm familiar with.
And is it strictly for recruiting, or is it, what else is it gonna do? That's a lot of money to spend for...
It not only...
When you have all these other recruiting, you have the Indeed and the sites like that.
It not only helps with recruiting, but it helps the applicant from an online process to be able to streamline, then being able to apply online, which right now, our software does not do a good job of that, allowing people to apply online, so it's going to streamline that whole process.
And council, if it was 13, 668, 50, I wouldn't make that comment, but you know, it goes up. It's another 16 or 17, and it's another 17 or 18 the following year.
Yes, yes, you're right, Councilman Burrell. I think the first one is 13, is really 8,000 and some, and then there's a service or installation and some, and then there's a service or installation fee of five-plus thousand dollars to make the 13. Now, Mayor and Ms. Hannah...
Hannah's already gone.
Yes, she's already gone. So there was a carryover from the budget that was not spent for part of this, correct?
Right.
And then we're still short a little bit, about six...
Seven hundred and...
Seven hundred some dollars. But, and so I guess we'll just write this in the budget going forward. Yeah, and it's 16 and 16.8. It doesn't go past the 16.8.
Hannah's doing a great job in HR, and I'll have her track this and let us know how it's working. And if it's not, I mean, it's a contract, obviously, what we, what you've said before, just like Mike Ford, what we do, we can undo. So if we have to, we'll do that.
Make sure we track it and see how much return on our investment we get off of this, for sure. All right, guys. I think I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I'll just say that it looks like this is maybe geared towards locating municipal talent, maybe more so than some of the other options that are out there, Indeed and things like that. This looks like it's geared towards government specifically, so.
Yeah.
Public sector, thank you.
Yeah, we, I think sometimes it seems like we're getting a lot of software, but I, if you really look at it, it's because we never had any. We've been antiquated for quite a time now. So we're coming up to par. That's my opinion, but anyway. Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Agenda number nine, that the City Council authorizes and approves the hiring of the purchasing agent to allow the current purchasing agent, pay grade eight, who is retiring at the end of December 2023, to work with and train the new employee prior to his leaving. This will be beneficial to the city as well as the new hire. The temporary position will expire upon retirement of the current purchasing agent.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
No, I just like the, I like the habit of doing this so that we don't bring anybody in cold, give them time to train up before they take over their spot. Yeah, I think that's a great practice.
Yeah, I think we started this when we first got in in 2020, and I think it's worked out pretty well, Mayor. So I think it's a good standard. I agree, Councilmember Robinson, sorry. All right, I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right. Agenda item number 10, resolution. The City Council approves the selection of Gresham Smith for professional engineering services for RFQ Section Street resurfacing in the Central Business District, and hereby authorize Mayor Sherri Sullivan to negotiate the not-to-exceed fee to be approved by council.
Make a motion, we approve the resolution.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? So we talked about this. We're moving through this agenda pretty fast here, but a lot of this was done in the work session, so I just want to remind the public, those that are watching online and are here as well. It seems like we're moving through them without any discussion, but we have had discussion on these items. I have a motion and a second, no further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Agenda item number 11. The City Council approves the selection of watershed for professional architecture and engineering services for RFQ professional architecture and engineering services for the Nature Center Building Rehabilitation, and authorizes Mayor Sherri Sullivan to negotiate the not-to-exceed fee to be approved by council.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? This is the Triangle property. There was a house donated to us. Please tell me the people that donated the house.
The Triangle Conservancy Group.
Yes, the Triangle Conservancy Group. I forgot that on the radio this morning as well. The Triangle Conservancy Group donated this house, and we're about to do some reconstruction to make it into a Nature Center building. We discussed this in the work session. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Agenda item number 12. The City Council rejects all bids for the City of Fairhope Working Waterfront and Green Space Project, and authorize Mayor Sherri Sullivan to negotiate and contract with Rollin Construction, Inc., pursuant to the Code of Alabama 1975, Section 39 to 6.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right. All right, agenda item number 13. Resolution, the City Council approves the selection by the evaluation team, Darryl Moorefield, for professional engineering services for RFQ for sewer main upgrades to Kim Lee Horn and Associates, and authorizes Mayor Sherri Sullivan to negotiate the fee schedule for the contract. Darryl spoke to us earlier about this.
Make a motion, we approve the resolution.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Mayor, would you tell us again, how much of this is covered by grant funding as well? Did you say up to 1.5 million? Was that...
This is not...
It's the headworks project, not this project. This is the additional items needed for the restore project.
Let me know when that comes. Is it the next item?
It's the next item.
So, so these are supplies. These are just supplies, materials needed on this one, Councilman Borrell. All right, agenda item number 14. That the City of Fairhope awards RFQ professional engineering services...
Council President?
Oh, we didn't vote on it? No. I'm sorry.
Hey, hey, these growing pains are broken.
Oh, no doubt.
Yeah, you're good.
I'm sorry. Yeah, I told you I'd help you out, brother.
You're doing a fine job.
Yeah, Lisa, yell at me. Throw a piece of paper or something, because I'm moving. All right, did I get a motion? Can I get a motion?
You did. You have a motion and a second.
I did get a motion and a second.
Yes.
Okay. All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. I apologize, guys. All right, number 14. The City Council of Fairhope awards RFQ professional engineering services for wastewater treatment plant headworks improvement to Krebs Engineering and Associates, and hereby authorizes Mayor Sherri Sullivan to negotiate the not-to-exceed fee to be approved by council. This is the headworks, Councilman Borrell.
This is the project that we have a 1.5 million dollar grant from ADEEM. Yes.
And I make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? So this one is a little bit important. We'll talk about it a little bit again. So, you know, we've creating opportunity here for Krebs to go into our wastewater plant and do our headworks and our piping, to be speaking layman's terms, as far as how our influent comes in. We also are navigating through the grease and sludge that we have to try to deteriorate or decrease the smells or the odors that we have, and they're going to come in and kind of put a plan together for us to improve on those particular things at our plant. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Agenda item number 15. The City of Fairhope approves the procurement of inventory water meters for the Water Department, and authorized procurement based on the option allowed by the Code of Alabama 1975, Section 411651. This cost will not exceed $500,000.
A second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing... Pass through calls. Yep. Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Agenda item number 16. The City of Fairhope approves the procurement of materials for County Road 33 Water Main Upgrade for the Water Department to be purchased from Consolidating Pipe and Supply Company, Inc., as sole source provider in the state of Alabama for Neptune Technology Group, Inc., and our example from formal bid pursuant to Code of Alabama 1975, Section 411651B. The total cost not to exceed is $63,704.
I move to approve the procurement of this budgeted item.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Agenda item number 17. That the mayor, that the mayor and city treasurer are hereby authorized and directed to dispose of the personal property owned by the City of Fairhope, Alabama, described in section one above by the following method, sold for scraps or recycling at the highest offered value. I think Darryl talked to us about this one. This is copper and some other materials that they have at the plant.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Agenda item number 19. That the City Council approves the selection of Kimberly Horn Engineering Services for lead service line inventory, led service line inventory and compliance, and hereby authorizes Mayor Sherri Sullivan to negotiate the not-to-exceed fee to be approved by council.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I think this is something...
Government mandate.
Yep, I think this is something that we have to do, and that's good. We don't, we want to make sure that our signs, our infrastructure is safe, so that's a good thing.
Federal government mandate.
Yeah, EPA, no doubt. Okay. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Agenda item number 19. To award bid number 24005 US 31 Widening Gas Main Relocation to Equix Energy Services LLC with a bid proposal not to exceed $588,947.75.
Move to award the bid on this 100% reimbursable expense.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? As Councilman Borrell said, this will be 100% reimbursed. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Agenda item number 20. The City of Fairhope has voted to purchase Insight Software Spreadsheet Server, three-year maintenance contract from Global Software LLC, DBA Insight Software for the Treasury for a total amount of $21,075.35. Looks like it'll be $6,367 year one, pursuant to Code of Alabama 1975, Section 411651A11, and authorize Mayor Sherri Sullivan to execute the contract. I think this is the one Kim brought to us. Now, Kim, that, the 6,000, it doesn't escalate, if I remember, or it does, another thousand dollars if I'm correct, from 6,000, and I think the next year is like 7,000. Is that correct? Yeah, okay.
But you did say the three-year term does save money over three annual, one year.
Yes, it does.
So another thing, maybe that was on the Hannah thing. I saw that if we saw we needed to reduce the number, we could. I think that was on Hannah's.
Number of licenses.
Yeah, with the licenses, yes. Is that yours or Hannah's? I forget.
Well, it's the same.
It's the same thing.
You reduce the number of licenses or increase the license.
That's right.
It's gonna be based on user...
A user number, and we can do that each year, need be. Is that correct? Okay, that's important. All right, very good. All right.
I will make a motion to approve item number 20.
All right. I have a motion. I think Councilman Boone says second, I believe.
Second.
Yep.
Don't want to make a liar out of you.
I knew you wanted to say so, Boone. All right, I have a motion and a second. All in favor, any further discussion, guys? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right. Item number 21. The City Council hereby authorizes Mayor Sherri Sullivan to execute the intergovernmental agreement established, establishing the South Alabama Purchasing Association and to participate in its membership. The mayor spoke on this.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion?
How many municipalities or entities, government entities, are in this?
All of them.
I guess, establishing this?
All of them, isn't it?
To be honest, I don't have any, I don't know how many are in this particular buying group. Because, I mean, we're in several buying groups, and there's, you know, multiple municipalities.
It said establishing the South Alabama Purchasing. So I don't know if that was a Mobile, Baldwin, or Escambia, Washington.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be Mobile, Baldwin, and Escambia, because that's who SARS is made of.
Thank you. All right, any further discussion? This does, does this cost us anything?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, all right. It only helps us, correct?
Correct.
Yes, all right. So I don't have a problem with that. All right, so any further discussion, guys? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item number 22. The City of Fairhope hereby declares its official intent to allocate a portion of the proceeds of the warrant to reimburse the general fund of the city for expenditures incurred after the date that is not, or that is no more than 60 days prior to the date of the adoption of this resolution, but prior to the issuance of the warranty in connection with the acquisition provision, equipping, and construction of the improvements. This resolution is being adopted pursuant to the requirements of the Internal Revenue Code of 1986 as amended and treasure regulation, Section 1.1502E, promulgating thereunder. This is, this is Kim.
Move to declare our intent.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussions on this, guys?
I would like the legal counsel of the legal municipalities, please explain all that to us.
You know, I think Jay wrote this, or one of these lawyers had to write this.
He gets paid by the word.
Get paid by the word. I mean, promulgated? Are you kidding me? Thereunder.
Coming out of the internal revenue.
Promulgated thereunder. Yeah, thereunder. Promulgated. I was like, wow, that's a new language. All right, anyway. I have a motion and a second, correct? Do I have a motion and a second, guys?
You do.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. And we did discuss that, guys, in the work session. All right. Agenda item number 23. The City Council hereby approves the uniform work pants allowance mentioned in the resolution, but will furnish the required work shirts beginning January 1, 2024. The mayor spoke on this, so did Hannah.
Make a motion, we approve the resolution.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right. Agenda item number 24. The City of Fairhope names the property known as the Triangle, the Flying Creek Nature Preserve. All right.
So moved.
Second.
So moved and second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Did we, there were some clause, we had to run that by the Dias family. Did we run that by the Dias family? Didn't they have to, in that purchase agreement, Marcus, do you recall that?
I think, I think there were some provisions for what you could not name it.
I thought it was they had to approve of any naming.
I'll have to, I'll have to go back and look at it, but I know there was some specifics on...
Subject two.
I think there was some, I think there was some provisions on what you couldn't name it.
I don't think they'll have any problem whatsoever, but I think that may be in the contract.
We can go back and look at it.
We bring it back up. If they have the right, we'll fix it, Brother Ford. Thank you. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. There you go, Richard. You got a name, brother. All right. Agenda item number 25. The Mayor Sherri Sullivan is hereby authorized to execute a loan funding agreement with the Fairhope Airport Authority, a public corporation pursuant to Alabama Code, Section 11632. Now, Jack gave, Councilman Borrell gave a very good explanation about this in the work session.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right. Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right. Agenda item number 26. It's a donation. Katie Bolton, owner of Procycle and Try, would like to donate two bicycles, if I may.
Two bike racks.
Two bike racks, excuse me, guys. Two bike racks to the Fairhope Soccer Complex in the amount of $500 each, if we can, each.
Yes.
Is what I read, okay?
I make a motion and just want to point out that Katie Bolton is here in the audience, so thank you very much.
I could have brought her up earlier. Hey, Ms. Katie, we apologize. I could have moved you on up to the top. I'm gonna blame it on Councilman Robinson, because I asked him. I asked him, was anybody, he said, no, 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 nobody's out there.
I said, I think she probably wants to see the whole meeting, you know.
Oh, yeah, I forgot. You're a nerd. That's right. You're nerdy like that. All right, Katie. God bless you. Thank you for the donation. All right, so I have, do I have a motion?
You have a motion.
I made a motion.
I have a second. All right, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. We've already done number 27. Item number 28. Application for beer wine off premises license by Ravidu Rochan Halawatage. Halawatage.
Very nice.
DBA FRC General Trading LLC, 17026 State Highway 181, Fairhope, Alabama, 36532.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I have a motion and a second. I have a motion and a second. Officer Hammond says everything is good. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Motion carries. All right. Option number 20, agenda item number 29. It's appointment. Fairhope Public School Commission appoints, I think it's, it's.
David Johnson.
David Johnson. David Johnson. I don't have, I'm on that, I'm on that.
I make a motion to approve.
Yeah.
Mr. Dr. Johnson?
Yeah.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Motion carries. Agenda item number 30. It's another appointment to the Parking Authority.
Chris Schrader.
Mr. Chris Schrader. Anybody on here on the Parking Authority or? All is good. Okay. All right, can I get a?
I'll make a motion to approve.
All right.
I'll, I'll second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Motion carries. Agenda item number 31. This is public participation for agenda items or for any, anything at this point. We're at the end here. This is our second public participation. So, you have to say your name and your address and you have three minutes to speak. If you're going to be redundant, if someone is saying the same exact things, then say that one thing. You have something new to say. You come up and you say something new.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. My name is Carol Wilson. Address 489 Bartlett Avenue, Fairhope, Alabama. I come to you this evening with a somber concern and here to advise you that even though the citizens of Fairhope have provided concern to the Board of Trustees of the Fairhope Library regarding books containing sexually explicit content, I hope there are no minors in this audience.
Just a reminder, they could be watching.
We are live streaming.
All right, I will, I will guard my comments accordingly. The trustees have not responded to requests for reconsideration of books containing inappropriate materials to minors. I was going to read some of the excerpts, but because there may be children watching, I will just cite the names of the reconsideration, the books that I have asked for reconsideration. Lighter Than My Shadow is a book about a young anorexic woman who recalls her life with and treatment of her anorexia. The book contains frequent obscene sexual activities, including sexual assault, nudity, mild infrequent profanity, self-harm, including anorexia, cutting, and suicidal ideations. The next book is even more explicit. It's a book about a young girl who has sold into the sex slave trade to pay off her family's debt. This book contains explicit, aberrant sexual activities, including the rape of a minor, minor involved in prostitution and explicit violence. Both of these books are filed in our teens section. I'm going to submit Alabama Code 2022, Title 13A, Chapter 12, which is the criminal code regarding offenses against public health and morals. Also, Section 13A 12200.1, which defines what is harmful, harmful to minors and further defines the proliferation of materials to, that are harmful to minors. I'll also enclose a letter of Governor Kay Ivey's communication to the Alabama Public Library Service Executive Director of October 4, 2023, in which the governor rightly defines the core problem in our libraries, the exposure of children and youth to inappropriate materials without adequate means of parental supervision. The governor furthermore in that letter urged the executive director to take specific action to address this problem. As a response, the APLS executive director took action. The administrative memo of October 12, which I will submit to the Alabama Public Library Directors and Trustees now provides guidelines to library directors and trustees concerning inappropriate materials. Quote, "The official stance of the APLS is that it is entirely permissible to make decisions that lead to a more parent and friendly, child-friendly library environment, limiting a child's access to potentially harmful content or relocating controversial reading materials should not be misconstrued as censorship in any form." APLS recommends that libraries exercise their best judgment when it comes to shelving sexually explicit or otherwise inappropriate materials, regardless of the intended age group, to support a parent's right to protect their children and asks for that community values and needs be met. In an effort to bring to the attention of the Fairhope Public Library Director and Trustees serious concern, additional reconsideration forms have been filed on books, The Haters, Damsel, Crank, Identical, and Shine. No response to date has been received. However, with the new guidelines of the APLS executive director, we are in hopes that we will receive a timely response. After reviewing these books, I hope in my heart that the values of the public library, trustees or and/or the director do not represent the community values of the City of Fairhope. Furthermore, the guidance of the executive director strongly urges the trustees to take into consideration that a response be made timely for the books that are under reconsideration. I'm also submitting for your consideration a proposed resolution which may establish policy for library materials. I urge you to consider this resolution and/or a like-minded ordinance which will underscore the community values of this beautiful city which you are creating and nurturing every day through such a wonderful engagement of hospitality and perhaps make it unlawful for children to have accessible in the library books that are harmful to them. I am finally submitting a resolution of the Baldwin County Republican Party that opposes the exposure to minor children of inappropriate content in our public and school libraries. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson, thank you.
Hi, my name is Rebecca Watson and I'm at 124 Fig Avenue. I understand that you, as the City Council, do not choose the library books, but I also understand you, as the City Council, can halt the funds to the library until a compromise possibly can be reached. Mayor, I haven't heard you speak out about this at all. And I think as a constituent, we all want to know what, where you stand in this, in this discussion. Obviously, this isn't the time or the place, but I'm really, want to encourage you that we want to know where you stand and what your opinion is on this. I am the, the chairperson of the Moms for Liberty of Baldwin County and we have an approved, or I have a resolution that I would like to bring to your attention. We would like an ordinance passed that upholds the obscenity law in Alabama. And. And I just want to say that those Girl Scouts were so precious and I just really, really loved that they came up here and they were so innocent and well-spoken and they actually get to have their childhood and sell cookies and it just really touched my heart as a mother and just as a community member. And those are the kids that I'm up here trying to protect from happening to find a book in the library that could put things into their head that really don't need to be there. So, I really appreciate your time and what you do for this community and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello again, council members and mayor. My name is Stephanie Dernan. I live at 209 Hemlock Drive in Fairhope. Thank you, Mr. Conyers, for attending the last meeting. It was nice to see you there. Did you leave that meeting with any forward direction to report back to your council mates? I guess you would say council members?
Just that, per the library board, they were taking the reconsideration requests into consideration and have a process that they follow to go through that.
Okay. During that meeting, the library board mentioned 10,144 children came to the library this past year. That's possibly 10,144 children subjected to inappropriate pornography in our libraries. They also mentioned that money-wise, $10,000 to $12,000 is spent annually on purchasing books for the children of Fairhope to place in the library. I adamantly object to my taxpayer money being used to purchase books that have pornography in them for our children. I urge you to take action. I urge you to communicate with the citizens who care about this issue. There's been lots of crickets going on. It's certainly not appreciated. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right, seeing none, we'll close the public participation. All right. Agenda item number 32 is an executive session. Do I have the? Yeah, yeah.
As City Attorney, Marcus C. McDowell, I hereby request the Fairhope City Council go into executive session based on Alabama Code, Section 3625A 7A3 to discuss imminent potential impending litigation. As City Attorney, I hereby request the City Council of the City of Fairhope rise from a regular City Council meeting on Monday, November 13, 2023 to go into executive session. The City Council shall be in executive session for approximately 45 minutes. At the end of the executive session, the City Council shall return to the City Council chambers to resume a regular City Council meeting.
And I make a motion to go.
No action. No expected action.